Nine fifty-nine P M. It still says starting, is it good? Alright, councillor Wall?
You have to start the meeting.
I did, we've resumed the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay.
Oh, I need the motion to go past ten o'clock.
Well, second that. All those in favor? Thank you, I was like. Like, we're so close, the guys, we're so close. Alright, moving on to item eight point four, recommend that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve the staff recommendation with names inserted as determined by council at the next. This is so working. The next council meeting.
That's the cover sheet, right?
Yes.
We're figuring out whose names go into the.
I know.
Thing for the travel for the conferences.
But it doesn't say that.
Uh, my apologies on that.
Okay, so I'm gonna redo that, it hasn't been seconded. I'd like to make the recommendation to council that they approve staff, like, can you help me?
Wait, wait, I got, I got, I can make this motion.
No, is it?
I'd like to make the motion that the committee of the whole recommend to council which delegates will be attending what conferences?
In twenty twenty-six.
In twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, can I go?
I said the words, yeah.
Thank you. No, I was like, this does not make any sense. It was like. Oh, this is your fault, okay, cool, no, I was kidding. So just so this body knows, this year I'm going to be attending, I've put forward to Mr. Malkinson, I will be attending the U B C M in Vancouver, the F C M in Edmonton, the N C L G A in Prince George, and if approved by council at the next regular council meeting, I'd like to akin keeping it rural as well, which takes place in Columbia and June.
Would it be better if you went to the rural, the northern one in Grand Prairie?
The growing north.
Growing the north.
I didn't even heard about that one.
That's in policy, I believe. Who's in Grand Prairie this year?
Oh, the one that's in Grand Prairie, it happens every year.
That's correct, yeah.
Right, what are the dates of that one?
The one is in the north. Ah, I got you, it's this February.
Yeah, it is in February. I don't know that we found dates for it.
You got quite a bit out of the keeping it rural, didn't you?
Um, I didn't mind it, it wasn't one of their best years, I had planned on not going, and I've been spoken to by four different mayors telling me I absolutely should go because while last year wasn't one of their best years, this year's going to be better.
February seventeen to nineteen, twenty twenty-six, growing the north.
Well, I, I think it would be important for, as I always say every year, as many of us that can't attend U B C M to attend U B C M.
Yeah, I'll add growing the north.
If, if the budget would allow that, that we budget for everyone to go to U B C M if they can?
Yes, that's, that's the, the plan, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
If I may, I think we should budget for everyone to go to N C L G A and U B C M. And then honestly, I'm in, I'm in reasonable agreement to, you know, maybe two members to the growing the north, you know, one or two to F C M, because it's just Edmonton, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe one or two to the natural resource forum as well. Because honestly, frankly, the point of this is to just be able to inform staff as to what we should budget for, and then we can see the numbers.
I know I'm not doing the natural resources forum, I will not be attending that, so. You gentlemen have already gone once, so I am, I'm gonna offer it to councillor Woodall and councillor Johnson's first, if they choose to not attend, then you're more than welcome to put your names forward if you'd like to. And then, yeah, U B C M will be all of us. I am. It is becoming the end of your terms, and a lot of you have not attended F C M, I attended on my own cost when it was in Calgary last year, so this year I am going to actually go being funded by the village.
I, I think if there was ever a year you should go, it's this year.
I would love to attend F C M if, if given that opportunity.
Yeah.
Why?
I wouldn't fly to F C M.
I wouldn't fly, I would try. Well, and then, I think I would treat it as I do U B C M, where I would get us an Airbnb, just to save costs as best as we can, that's how I'm able to send all of us to U B C M every year. I save an average of seventy-nine hundred dollars in that week, just having us all stay in one space, so.
Crazy enough, I actually was thinking about approaching, like, I don't know if you'd be into more than just people in F C M, but I was looking at that today, there are Airbnbs for rent right downtown.
Yeah.
Right there, and at reasonable prices, similar to what we did in Vancouver.
Yes, yeah. So I just, I know this year, just for transparency through you, Mr. Malkinson, I was going to offer for council if they would like to, it's so close. They've never had the opportunity to go yet, not one of them have gone.
A lot of one, I already used to enjoy it.
Yeah, it's normal, last trip was in Ottawa, right, like, it's not very often that, that this actually comes to us. When I went to the one in Calgary, I was able to see Prime Minister Trudeau at that time. Singh wasn't there, he was there during the video conference and, and did a wonderful presentation. So, when this does come up, the regular council meeting, I was going to say, I think it would be, be nice if, if more than just I go, as we are coming to the end of your guys' terms, and I think that we could do some really great advocacy on some of the federal stuff that's trickling down to become our problem.
That was something that came up quite a bit at U B C M, was a lot of the, I mean, we're gonna get into that here, which I don't want to chime in, but the, a lot of the things that we're talking about were the waters are becoming muddy between what is provincial jurisdiction, and what is federal jurisdiction, and what is municipal jurisdiction, and everything's something's gotta change here, or no one's gonna know who's accountable for what.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so this is gonna come forward over the next couple of weeks, please think on which conferences you would like to go to. Again, as you gentlemen have been to the natural resources forum once, I am gonna offer it to councillor Johnson and councillor Woodall first, if they decide that neither of them like to go, you're more than welcome to put your, your name forward, I will not be going to that one. Yes?
I, I'd like to make the recommendation that the committee go to, or that the committee recommend to council, they can change that, that Mayor V H be authorized to attend U B C M, F C M, N C L G A, and Keeping It Rural.
Yeah.
And growing the north.
And growing the north.
And growing the north.
Yeah, okay.
And that another member of council be authorized to attend Growing the North in Grand Prairie. So, not saying it names or anything. And that all of council be invited to attend U B C M, N C L G A, and F C M.
So we'll cost that out.
Yeah. And then just same thing, cost it out with driving and an Airbnb, we'll, we'll do as much as we possibly can to save money, so we're getting more bang for our buck, for sure. I think our conferences this year was twenty-eight thousand, and I think we spent under that.
You are projecting to be under that.
Yeah.
Um, councillor, yeah, one of the councillors I don't think has really used much of their budget at all, so I think that's brought the overall down quite a bit. There's some that were over, but, yeah.
Not, not all members made my. To attend U B C M and N C L G A and F C M, but that option there.
The option is there, yeah. Okay, can I get a second, second on the recommendation, you've just made a recommendation and a recommendation. So we're gonna vote on councillor Wall's recommendation, and then we're gonna vote.
Well, we voted to discuss it and make a recommendation, and now I've made a recommendation.
No, you, the first recommendation was that this go forward with the names for.
But we haven't names.
I don't know. It is a recommendation, recommendation, right, Jimmy?
I thought he was doing a giant recommendation.
Oh, okay.
That's what I intended to do.
My intent is secondary, is to second that we are doing, you know, five N C L G A, five F C M, five U B C M, two B C Natural, and two
Growing the North.
Growing the North, and we're just doing the budget numbers right now, not assigning names to anything, that's mine.
But.
But the mayor is going to, the provision is that the mayor will be attending them all.
Correct, all of the B C Natural.
Except all of the B C Natural, I'm not going to say, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question then, all those in favor? That's unanimous and carried. Do I need to call another, all those in favor, or is that just one really big, big one, we're all good?
That was a big mega one.
Okay, cool, I'm now with big mega ones.
Why did Jimmy record it?
He's like, don't.
And my apologies.
Don't ask me what I did.
I thought it was gonna be helpful, so let's try to see what the one line.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll compare those, we'll get her.
My intent behind that was.
Same for the recording, let me tell you.
Everyone gets the opportunity for U B C M, N C L G A, and F C M, and the mayor will be attending U B C M, F C M, N C L G A, Keeping It Rural, and
Rural.
And Growing the North. And that two, an additional member will be attending Growing the North, and that two members will be at the natural resource forum that are currently under term.
Okay. Yeah, and that's what was voted on, so.
Okay.
Okay, so let's move on to eight point five. Recommend that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve policy number one point two zero key holders as presented at the next council meeting, can I get a second there? Seconded by councillor Wall, thank you. Discussion regarding the policy?
Well, with all, yeah, so it's just amended inside.
Yeah, yeah, it's just basically making it.
Yeah, it's not substantive.
What's the difference between this and the other one? Other than the A is being really close together for some reason.
Yeah, I think that was a, a way that this exported, and it was a font thing. We were looking at it and thinking, is this an old west font, but we zoomed in on it, and we were like, no, that seems to, anyway. Let's know what we wanna talk about.
It just might be the margin, it might be that like equalized margin nonsense, right?
The key control procedures, item five and item six are, you know, basically saying people need to give their keys back after they're terminated, or after they're reassigned, or after I request them. Turning your keys, and then item number six is duplication of any key, you're unauthorized sharing an arm, but it's a security.
Yeah. I, I just wanna note that there is a, an error.
Yeah.
That the, that, that there is an additional page in here that I think was intended to be omitted.
Okay, where are we?
Like, literally the next page.
Are you talking the acknowledgement and agreement?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the tax sale page.
That is. That is, it's all right. Tax sale is also part of.
Tax sale is also part, it's number two.
No, that's not, that's, that's a different one.
Yeah.
Different policy.
Yeah. You're doing three policies.
All under eight point five?
Yeah.
That's correct, yeah.
Oh.
It's, it's just the policy review thing.
Okay, I confused myself, I was like, okay.
No worries.
Apologies, apologies.
Alright.
That's supposed to be the next one, but it's not.
I'm gonna call the question then on the key holder policy, all those of being recommended, all those in favor? Okay, wonderful. Okay, number two, that the committee of the whole recommend council approve policy two point seven signing authority as presented in the next council meeting. Can I get a second there? Councillor Rabel, discussion?
Again, this is just tidying up, your worship, just aligning with the bylaw that was recently adopted by council.
That's what I'm wondering, yeah.
Well, it's tidying up.
So this is just making it the same, wait, why is there a bylaw and then also a policy, I'm curious about that now.
Sometimes there's different authorities that are expressed by either. Again, we, the approach on the bylaw was basically correct, what we saw was an error, we incurred an error in our alignment with the policy.
Councillor Wall?
I, I would like to make the, I'm an amendment to this policy to change the names of people above.
I have the names at the bottom.
On the next one, though, that's three point six.
On the tax sale.
Oh, tax sale?
Oh.
Well, because it simply hasn't been amended yet, that's just sad.
Good old Adam, hasn't been here forever.
We didn't amend this one, because we're recommending it be repealed.
Oh. Is that what the recommendation is?
We rescind, yeah. Uh, yeah, we rescind.
Is this number three or number two?
Right now, I understand that we are discussing the signing authority one.
Yeah, it's, there's a.
Um, but.
Oh.
We're just on the previous one, right?
On the signing authority one.
Yeah, the signing authority.
You're just all over the place.
Um, if I may.
Yes.
So really, it's just under authorization, it's two, it's just aligning the titles with the bylaw, right? For signing authority.
That is correct, there's also a requirement to proactively disclose any conflicts of interest in the event that somebody is signing off a conflict on.
Where's that labeled?
Uh, item five, draft policy.
Okay. Sorry, I, I, I'm so confused between these three documents. That's, that's me, I'm so sorry.
Can I have a call to question, all those in favor? And that's unanimous and carried.
Continue approaching, I don't think we're at the last meeting, so my, my apologies on that.
So moving on to number three, that the committee of the whole recommend to council that they rescind policy number three point six tax sale as presented in the next council meeting, can I?
I'll second back, since it's been on for the last twenty minutes.
There we go. Yes, councillor.
And so the reason we're rescinding it is because it's literally saying follow the charter.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, we did, Jimmy and I did do a dive on this one, section six four five, section two five four. Basically are restating what the charter says itself, at one point, I think in twenty seventeen, there was a better fleshed out process for the, or rather, I don't know that there's a clearly delineated process for the community itself to enter into the tax sale, to make it into the tax sale. And there's now, I think, been an amendment since then, that actually allows a local government council via resolution, you know, to basically provide directions to staff to enter into that process, so. So at this point, kind of redundant.
Redundant, yeah.
And, and so with that, we simply just conduct tax sales as per existing legislation, like the Local Government Act and the Community Charter, we, I don't, I don't know if we have any specific bylaws to this, or if we need to. So this is something that's just like restating something that's already on books.
That's correct, your worship, and this, the statute is very specific on how the tax sales need to be done, there are those requirements that are due, stuff like that, so a policy to this effect, although it was served a purpose in twenty seventeen, I'm trying to find a, you know, a purpose for it today.
So it's like having a bylaw that says anything zoning has to happen, B C building code or something.
That's the joke, it's the appendix policy, basically.
Yeah. Can I have a call to question then?
We could go the other way, and have policies that cite every part of legislation.
I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor?
Repeal.
Um, that's unanimous and carried, thank you. Moving on to item number ten, correspondence. Ten point one, recommend that the committee of the whole receive this correspondence for information, can I get a second there? Seconded by councillor Wall.
Your worship, this is your reply to the resolution that was submitted, I believe, in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Province provided a bit of a response to.
I read it, and was super frustrated from like writing back and going, well, why don't you actually do the things you say that you're supposed to be doing? And I bit my tongue off.
Well, there was an extraordinary resolution that the general meeting this year, that'll hopefully condense things and provide more.
Oh, yeah, really, yeah, it'll actually filter more voices, even better. Yeah, no, I, I laughed and was like, oh, hilarious, why don't you actually do the things you're supposed to be doing? But anyway, all those in favor receiving for information? Unanimous and carried. Reluctantly.
We just talked about it, and you're like, I don't know if I wanna, well.
It's basically saying like, the province, you know, I, I do appreciate the economic development stuff, but oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy. Anyways, okay, we'll just start it.
Uh, alrighty, so, bylaws none, administration reports, twelve point one, that the committee of the whole receive the fire department report for information, can I get a second there? Seconded by councillor Wall. Any?
Whoa, just out of curiosity, there is a new bit at the bottom where it's like listing out the time for every bit involved, which is
probably an error on my part.
Interesting, yeah, I, I, I appreciate it, but I don't think we, you know, I don't think that we should get some details.
I appreciate that, that was a question that was left for myself, and I think on this draft, we ended up leaving it in, so I can omit it going forward.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor receiving for information? It's unanimous and carried. Recommend that the committee of the whole receive the public works report for information. Second there, councillor Wall?
I like that.
Lots and lots of stuff, I really, really like it. He's done, he's busy, busy, busy.
Two, two quick updates, I was anticipating for Mr. Chad to be doing a bit of a, to be talking up some of the curb stop work that's been undertaken recently. As of today, we had two hundred and fifty-four curb stops mapped via the G I S system, and via the G I S mapping profile that we're building out currently. And we had thirty-five curb stops that were basically confirmed to not be located or to not be present on properties, so we've narrowed down from, I think, what was originally about ninety, a couple of weeks back, I think we're down to about thirty-five now, so we, we found a sizable portion of them. But I think we're approaching the margins of what we can realistically, what we can realistically find. But I think at this point, that provides us a good number to assume for budgeting, replacement, and repair for twenty twenty-six, so. Chad's, Chad's gone, and the crew have gone to great lengths to try to do locates, offer their history to the crew that's doing those engagements. And, yeah, it's been a positive work.
Okay, councillor Rabel?
Um, the third last point, remove the outhouse from skating rink due to vandalism, that sucks, but, you know, that sucks if people are vandalizing it, but anyways, long and the short is, do you remove it in the winter because it's too cold, or do you just leave it once it's available?
No, we usually, so maybe you weren't here for that council meeting, there was a, a report brought forward to council regarding the nonstop vandalism of the outhouse at the skate rink, and it was beginning to cost us quite a bit of money because we're having to keep replacing parts. So the council made the, the decision to just remove it at this point in time, the skate rink, skating rink is up and running, and is functioning later in the year, and then put it back, and hopefully there'll be enough foot traffic around there because the vandalism was slow. It is quite, quite sad, you know, it was beginning to cost the villagers money, they were breaking the screens, they were ripping all the toilet paper things off. Yeah, it was, it's, it's not been, been great, so we've taken it off for now. Once the skating rink is flooded and fully functioning, as it usually is, we will then put it back. Um, I did wanna mention to you, Mr. Malkinson, that once the skate rink is flooded and fully functioning, please be sure that Public Works moves the bleachers over.
Public Works moves the bleachers over the skating rink?
Over the skating rink, yeah, we started doing that last year.
It's nice.
Um, and it is nice, people, people like having the bleachers there.
We will have a report at your next meeting about flooding, given the state of the water restrictions that the community's under, so that, that'll be probably a report that we'll provide you guys and see what our decision is on.
I wonder if we could purchase water from the fill station in the north piece, or Aqua Terra out of Alberta, and then truck that in, just to fill it up?
Yeah, that's a option. Oh, shucks. It's just, somebody doesn't have a place to have, and then again, we, you know, it's something that we're in, not, there's no bear, frustration aren't into doing it, but, you know, there's obviously a bit of a cloud, you know, with the water restrictions, so that's something that we'll bring forward at a later date.
Okay.
Well, because we have to be responsive stewards as well.
Also still fill the pool.
We'll talk about that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. Alright, any other? Yes?
So was the public works office broken in two, or is just the alarm?
Alarm, a little alarmer, yeah.
Okay.
That was some, something was moving around inside.
Raccoons, probably damn skunks, we've had enough of them this summer.
Oh, my gosh.
No one even.
My bad, lady kept feeding them, and they just kept coming back. Okay, alright, I'm gonna call the question then, all those in favor? Unanimous and carried. Recommend that the committee of the whole receive the C A O report for information, second there, councillor Wall. Any questions for Mr. Malkinson, you've been a very, very busy man.
Sure.
Yeah, we've been having fun.
And I'm kinda taking credit for a lot of the work of the team here too, so. A huge, huge thanks to, you know, there's, there's a different person behind every one of these things that's helping the village out, so, you know, thanks to everybody.
We have a phenomenal team, they work great, so. Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous and carried. Alright, moving on to reports, councillor Johnson is away with notice, councillor Rabel, what have you been up to?
Um, well, I guess the main piece would be yesterday, of course, the Pushtu Legion in the village held its annual Remembrance Day ceremonies. We actually have the attendance of the M P Bob Zimmer, the N L A Larry Newfield, a piece for original area chief director, Eric Keeter, and yourself, mayor, as well, we had President James Wall there as well, branch. And so, and then, of course, Corlin Zon as pastor, and then some of the other folks that were there as well, but anyways, it's always good to see all the faces, absolutely packed house. It, it's an important day, it's good to see that folks still, you know, respect it and, you know, are coming out to it. Anyways, it's just good to see, you know, the community supporting such an event, and anyways, wonderful turnout, and so I'd say that's the big piece that takes a lot of planning for all those volunteers, so I absolutely kudos to them. And, no, it's good, it's good to see that, you know, good stuff's happening, and that's an important event. It's our hun, it was the hundredth, if not more, because I've heard of stories of it being from nineteen eighteen even, and maybe even from the Boer War, you know, but records from that era are kinda hard to come by, but it's, it's definitely one for the history books to get all levels of government there to our municipality, so I'd say that's a note for sure.
Yeah.
But spectacular turnout, you know, even though it was a little windy, it was still a really nice day, but I would say that's the big piece, of course, there's always a million bits and bobs, but you know, nothing significant with this body otherwise, uh, yeah, I appreciate it.
Councillor Wall?
I probably forgot something.
I, I haven't been up to a heck of a lot, I've been working quite a bit, but I didn't have the high privilege of hosting Remembrance Day yesterday. And I'm so proud of the community to show up, approximately two hundred people at Remembrance Day. I had, had two volunteers keep a tracker, my numbers are off by about thirty, so I'm gonna say somewhere between one eighty and two hundred would actually showed up. And for a community of this size to show that support, it's phenomenal, that's a third of the tower in, in one place, at one time, to show their respect to our veterans, and that means an incredible amount to me to have been able to do that, and I want to thank the community, I want to thank you, mayor, for your wonderful speech. And I also attended a special meeting.
You're ridiculous. You, you know what, you're not wrong.
Yeah, I attended a special meeting that happened yesterday. That happened today.
It's not midnight yet, you can't even start.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah. Okay, wonderful, poor Mr. Malkinson's been.
In the middle of this meeting, I attended a special.
He's on like a fourteen hour day, you have to be kind to him. Thank you.
My pen's actually running out of ink, so.
Uh, councillor Woodall is also away with notice. Yeah, I've been, you know, doing my, my weekly check-ins with, with staff, meeting each week with Mr. Malkinson, see how things are going. Um, I attended the P R D meeting on November sixth. One of the big things that came out of the P R D meeting is we did have a delegation regarding the update of the Taylor Wind project and future potential projects coming forward. So there are two calls of power that have, have been projected, so there's the Taylor two and the Sundance. Um, and the R F P for Taylor two is going to be completed as of January fifth, twenty twenty-six, um, with the Sundance planned for twenty twenty-eight. Taylor one and, and two, they're, they're trying to have as low of an economic or eco impact as possible, so they're gonna have them have, have them share as much infrastructure as possible to limit the impacts to the area. This will include looking at sharing the current transmission lines between Taylor one and two, but Taylor two is planning to have between thirty to forty-five wind turbines.
Where, where are these?
Taylor one is on what is that river? I know, I can't.
Is it on the north side of the piece?
Mr. Malkinson's gonna look it up while I'm kinda filling you guys in.
Okay, sorry.
No worries, I know that Sundance is north of Tumler Ridge, so this, there is a potential to limit the impacts of the area by using existing oil and gas roads and clear forestries spaces. They're currently looking into the impacts that this could have on the, the Kailua in the area, so they're working with the First Nations regarding that. Sundance is within the bounds of the district of Tumler, and is gonna have between thirty to forty-five turbines as well. I also wanna mention that Taylor two is actually a mixture of crown and private land, but the majority of it is actually gonna be on crown land. There has been.
And Trent thinks it's ten kilometers south of the district of Taylor.
Yeah. And then Taylor two is sort of adjacent.
Like on the Taylor hill, or just above it on the ridge, south of the river.
I haven't seen any wind turbines up here.
I hear it indicates on their website that it's just north of Dawson Creek and just south of Fort St. John's.
I know, it's very.
Oh, wow, yeah.
It's very clear, yeah.
Okay, so Farmington?
Honestly, they had a map there, and I didn't even really think to like zoom in on it, I was so, I was like, okay, well, what's going on, how's this, yeah. so, I was like, okay, well, what's going on, how's this at, yeah.
And the other one is going to be fully within the district of Tumbler?
It's getting partially within the district, so it's, it's, it's half in, half out, it's kind of one of those, yeah.
It's in the middle area.
Yeah, one of the biggest concerns that they are getting from the community is the im, the impacts that this is going to have to the Guilla Lake Park, the Sundance one, as it's going to be adjacent to it, and there's actually already wind turbines in the area there. The delegation made claims of limiting landfill impacts to the board, which was another concern we always bring up, which is very, but the board is confused on how this is possible without the current technology being created. The delegation stated that if a blade needs to be removed or switched due to damage, that it would rail the blade out of the region and focus on either repairing it or disposing of it out of.
They, they can't even rail them in, never mind rail them out.
It says here that they're railing them in and railing them out, so.
Good luck with the deactivated rail lines.
I'm right.
Right.
There was so, like, it, like, we all were like, wait, what?
They, they would go trains, right?
I don't, you know what?
It gave over the tra.
The fact that Director Rose didn't actually just start steaming from the ears at one point was most impressive.
Is this a report from the province?
No, this is from the company that tendered Taylor Two and Sundance, so. They are going to focus on repairing the blades rather than destroying them, and use the workable components as much as possible in future projects.
If we made fiberglass and we can't repair it.
Yeah, there's currently, as far as I'm aware.
That's why I said the board is confused.
This board looks confused.
I know, it was like the whole thing. And then, of course, was the, the, the emergency services budget for the standalone E O C building through the P R R D, that was also brought forward, so I contacted Mr. Mountenson after the meeting, and was like, uh-huh, they've done it, they are going forward with it, we have to bring it to council, which led to us meeting the whole next day and, and, and having a very in-depth conversation about the impacts it has to the strap plan, so, thank you so much, Mr. Mountenson, for always being available for my random, hey, I gotta tell you something.
I couldn't say no if I wanted to.
Yeah, so that's how, th, those are the main things that, that came from the P R R D that really impacted us. There was also the election of the chair happened at the P R R D meeting, so congratulations goes out to Chair Spurling, who was elected by, by the board, and another congratulations goes out to Vice Chair Hebert, and so I know that they're, they're both going to do a phenomenal job, so I'm very, very excited for both of them. On November eleventh, I attended the Remembrance Day ceremony at the Pusqueby Legion, a big thank you to President Wall of the Pusqueby Legion, and, and to everybody who showed up, it was, it was phenomenal to, yeah, see, see so many people gathered within one space. Everybody loved the lunch, I heard nothing but awesome things, the only complaint I did this evening is, I wish they had more chairs so we could fit more people in.
We literally put every chair we had, we even fixed broken chairs, but, like, it was, we literally don't have enough chairs.
The only complaint.
Next year, a regular chair.
Almost, yeah, the only complaint is, I guess actually about twenty people came in and then left because it was standing room only, and they were, they didn't want to stand the whole time, so they didn't join to Dawson, but the only thing I got was, I wish they had more seating, I would have stayed, and I was like, I'll let them know, but man, there's a capacity.
There, there is an actual firewall that's there.
Yeah, I'm like, we could only fit, and I did say, like, there was like two hundred people there, so.
I, I am very thankful for our, our fire. It was a part of the ceremony.
Yeah. And so a huge shout out to the Pusqueby Legion, you guys worked so hard, it was so nice to have somebody there with a bagpipe, that was really, really cool. I haven't heard that in years, it was, it was so nice to actually see that. I think, yeah, it was, it was a phenomenal job, I know Director Hebert's speech left everybody just, it was so heartfelt, I'd like, he, he topped the whole house, he, he really, really did, he, I thought he got that, like, like, that was like a poem that somebody had written, and he actually wrote that entire thing himself. And I was, he was kind of like reading the experts of it, uh, at the November sixth P R R D meeting, and I was like, oh my gosh, okay, you know what, I'm not even going to try this year. You win it. You're killing it, I'm going to keep my church sweet and to the point. So he, he definitely, he stole the, the show, he did a phenomenal job. His speech was the talk of, of everybody, really, it was, it was phenomenal. And so just a couple of reminders going out. So one, for everybody here and for the community, for the community, and mainly for Jimmy. The schnitzel dinner is happening this Friday at Pusqueby Legion, I don't know if you've ever had schnitzel there, it's the size of your face, it's delicious. Go eat it, it's totally worth it.
It's on, yeah.
Every second Friday of every month, except for.
Bring your own plate at my table.
And, and honestly, get there early, tickets sell out, like, they physically sell out.
Three thirty.
Yeah, you gotta, you, like, you gotta run to the door, go, it's phenomenal. And then, of course, the Walking Path of Justice is happening with Lloyd River at the Oventive Center. Just a reminder, I'm not able to go, I do have my P R R D meeting on the Thursday, I have a meeting on Friday, and I'm not available.
This is tomorrow?
No, 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 this is next week. So this takes place next week at the Oventive Center from Wednesday to Friday, and it just still happened then, yeah, from the nineteenth to the twenty-first.
Your worship, we'll send a note to council if you don't pick one, just the registration.
Yeah, yeah, I would love to, to go, but I, like, these are things that were, were booked, like, over a month ago, and so, just a reminder, if you're in town and you're available and you would like to go on behalf of the village, please feel, feel free, we do have one registration currently, and I reached out to. We have two, oh, okay, okay, good, because I did reach out to them on Monday, and I asked if there were still spaces in case we only had one, and the lady said that there were, um, there was more. I did ask if they had a, like, a Zoom option, they sadly don't, or else I would totally tend to be a Zoom. So that's going on next week from Wednesday to Friday. The Old Fashioned Christmas is also happening Thursday evening, so do not forget, the twentieth, the twentieth. I'm also not going to be here for that for my first year ever, I'm, I'm not, I know.
Oh, my.
I know. Don't even, I'm so upset about it. Yeah, I, I, I had booked a prior, prior engagement, and then when they announced it was on the twentieth, I went, oh, no, I'm not here. So, yeah, you guys are going to have to rep, like, real.
Thank you so much for the community. Happy every day.
I just feel awful, so you guys are really going to have to, like, rep, like.
We'll be running from station to station.
That's perfect, just shake every hand, kiss every baby, that would be, be perfect, I'd really, really deeply appreciate it. So just a reminder that it's happening Thursday evening. With that coming up so quickly, have we started advertising for you? I haven't seen anything on our social media.
I understood that there is, so we were holding off until Remembrance Day was complete, that was the idea there, but.
To get Christmasy, yeah.
My understanding is that we launched several things today.
Today, okay, I haven't checked today, so if you could do me a favor, go home today or tonight or tomorrow, and share it all over your social media, and just let everybody know, because we haven't released the date of it yet, and I would hate for us to see a low turnout, because it is quite a successful event, and this year, the Christmas, the, the church is doing something, we've got Santa, we've got the library, the museum, right, so everybody's still taking part, so please go out and share it like crazy.
Looks like we don't have it up on the social media, your worship, so we'll get it up there tomorrow morning.
Okay, I was like, yeah, okay, if you, if you could, we will, you are a terrible person, we will, we will share it all tomorrow, so, yeah, we'll put it all over social media like crazy. So, yes, I'm not going to be there, so please represent while I am not there.
What time is it, November, Thursday, November twentieth?
Do you think it starts at four thirty?